We're going to call this meeting of the town council to order. I'm sorry, I have laryngitis this morning and this evening. Can we all please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everybody again, and my apologies, I have some laryngitis this evening. So when I can, I will defer to my vice president to read some things so you guys can hear. Just to start off with, to remind people at home that the meeting is being streamed live via YouTube, please go to the town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link for that if you're tuning in at home. Let's see. We do not have any condolences this evening for anyone in particular, but I'll still ask for a moment of silence for all deceased Bridgewater veterans, family members, and friends. Thank you. All right, I'll ask for a, for the minutes of the October 1st, 2024, our town council meeting, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And second, for discussion, any further discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. To save my voice, I have no announcements this evening, and we do not have any proclamations this evening. So we all start with citizens open forum, and Mr. Vice President, can you read?
I can.
The announcement for this.
I got it ready.
Right up there, please, thank you.
Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting.
And again, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you so much. Mr. Baumgartner.
My quirks. I do have to push the button. I don't, it says don't push. Don't start the clock yet. Good evening, Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. I'll start by thanking the councilors, as I always do, for your service to our town. I'm speaking tonight both for myself as well as representing Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights. Back in June 2021, the town of Bridgewater pursuant to a unanimous vote of the town council raised the pride flag in front of the Academy Building during the first two weeks of June. This flag raising was a clear statement that Bridgewater would be a welcoming place for members of the off-discriminated against LGBTQ+ community. The library and schools also posted banners and signs joining in this affirmation. Members of the BSU community and Bridgewater Rainham Schools, students, staff, and administrators joined in the celebration. Subsequently, the town of Bridgewater has flown the pride flag in each of the following years, and starting in 2022, has flown the Juneteenth flag to symbolize our welcoming and affirmation of BIPOC, Black and Indigenous People of Color, again with unanimous support of each council. Many of the young people who attended these ceremonies commented on how important this was to their self-worth and feelings of inclusion in our town. Furthermore, these events were so positive that some councilors suggested an ordinance declaring these two flag raisings to occur annually without the need for new resolutions each year. You have before you tonight a resolution, and apparently a new ordinance which might supersede the resolution, calling for the flying of the POW MIA flag at all times at the Academy Building, with perhaps no exceptions allowed, or other flags needing to fly as a third flag. We at BCCR understand the meaning and importance of the POW MIA flag, especially to all the current members and veterans of the armed services who reside in our area. This flag represents the dedication and sacrifice to protect our country, its democracy, and basic human rights. We support the flying of the POW MIA flag. We are confident that this council will want to continue the yearly tradition of flying the Pride and Juneteenth flags. We would prefer to continue that tradition by flying these flags at the Academy Building, but not as a third flag. BCCR voted last week to suggest another possible solution, that the Pride and Juneteenth flags be raised during the same June timeframes as before, but on the flagpole at the south end of the Common, directly opposite the Academy Building. We hope that you will discuss this option, or other options, as part of your debate tonight on this subject, and we look forward to working with the council to reach a viable solution. In sum, we do not want to step back from the practices that have made Bridgewater a better place to live for all. I know, I got five seconds.
[laughing]
I timed it. One final anecdote, and an interesting irony or juxtaposition. The POW MIA flag reminds us of the sacrifices made by our servicemen and women to retain freedom and human rights. Among those POW MIA were members of the LGBTQ and BIPOC populations. The flying of the Pride and Juneteenth flags reminds us, in fact prevents us from forgetting that we still have work to do in maintaining civil rights and human dignity for all. Thank you, and I will share these via email with you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Please come on up.
Good evening, Lorene Powers, 41 Sunrise Drive. I am going to read two brief letters from two individuals who could not be here this evening. One is a junior at Bridgewater Rainham High School. My name is Kayla Dufino. I'm a member of BCCR and a Bridgewater resident. This year, I am also the Community Outreach Officer for the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club at BR. I have spoken at the past two pride flag raisings in Bridgewater, and last year addressed the importance of having a community that is accepting. Seeing the pride flag flown is truly meaningful to my peers and I. Continuing with the tradition of raising the Pride and Juneteenth flags in front of the Academy Building in June is significant to the meaning behind Bridgewater's acceptance. When I'm older, I wish to live in a community that doesn't judge others for who they are or who they love. I am tremendously proud to already live in a town where this is demonstrated. This upcoming June, I would love to see Pride and Juneteenth flags stay in the place they have called home for the past three years. The POW MIA flag means a lot to my family. My grandfather served in the Vietnam War, and his father served in World War I. One thing I know for sure is that they would love to know that Bridgewater is showing pride in both flags and sharing the flagpole. Even though I couldn't be there tonight, please take what I've written into consideration. The other letter is written by Carolyn Taggett, who is the Director of the Pride Center at Bridgewater State University. I am ready to express my support for flying the pride flag and the Juneteenth flag in June. As a member of the BSU community, I believe it is crucial for current and prospective members of BSU and for the residents of the town of Bridgewater to see visible signs of equality and inclusion at their town hall, Academy Building. Flying these flags at the Academy Building directly underneath the American flag send a powerful message of acceptance and support. It reinforces that the town of Bridgewater is a community that values all of its citizens, and that Bridgewater understands the historical significance of the end of slavery that is honored on Juneteenth and the Stonewall riots which sparked the LGBTQIA+ rights movement. These flags serve as a welcoming beacon for our Bridgewater community and visitors, fostering inclusion and encouraging dialogue around diversity and social justice. It has been my honor to be present and speak at two of the recent pride flag raisings, and it is wonderful to see so many different members of the Bridgewater community come together in joyful celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next, please, come on up.
Good evening, my name is David Michael, 21 Quail Run Road. I too am speaking on behalf of myself. I am also a member of Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to share my thoughts regarding the flag policy amendment that is up for discussion, I believe, tonight. The Pride and Juneteenth flags have been raised every June for the past four years with unanimous town council approval. These flags represent more than just colorful symbols. They stand for inclusion, equality, and the acknowledgement of the struggles and triumphs of marginalized communities. We understand the significance of the POW MIA flag honoring those who have served and are missing in action. We deeply respect and support our veterans, many of whom are LGBTQ and people of color. These individuals have sacrificed for the freedoms we all enjoy, yet historically their identities have often been erased or minimized. Let us not continue that pattern of exclusion today. Placing the Pride and Juneteenth flags under the POW MIA flag sends a message that these communities are somehow less important. We believe all voices and histories should be honored equally. We respectfully request that for the month of June, as we have done in previous years, the Pride and Juneteenth flags be flown in their own right, while the POW MIA flag comes down temporarily, or moved to the flagpole near the war memorial on the Common, which is actually more visible and seems to be a more appropriate location. This small gesture allows us to celebrate these important communities fully and ceremoniously. This is not about diminishing the value of any group, it's about making space for all voices. By continuing the practice of raising the Pride and Juneteenth flags in June, we are upholding the values of diversity and inclusion that our town seeks and should embody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. I'm going to make that motion.
Hi, my name is Janice Campbell Means, I live in Franklin, and I'm requesting to speak.
I'm going to make the motion to suspend the rules and allow Jean to speak.
Like I said, my name is Janice Campbell.
Yeah, we're just going to take a vote on that, hold on a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Like I said, my name is Janice Campbell Means. I was raised in Bridgewater. Parents still live at 280 Conant Street. I go back to Woody's Nursery School, to the Hunt School. I have strong roots here, still have family and friends here. I am a strong supporter of the POW flag, as I do have veterans in my family. Veterans who fought during a time that was segregated, they fought to be heard, seen, and be a part of. I have people who tell me to this day that they never thought that they would see Bridgewater have a Juneteenth or a flag raising. So I really hope that you will find a way to continue to have the Pride and the Juneteenth flag fly, not as a third flag. I mean, like I said, I agree with the BCCR members who asked for it to, if it could fly for the month across the street in the Common, so that it can continue to fly, but we really want our flag to fly because, as my BCCR fellow member said, you know, our armed, the people who fought in the armed services who are veterans, they fought for one of these privileges. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Ray O'Giammy on 221 Aldridge Road. I'm a member of BCCR, but I'm not speaking for BCCR, I'm speaking as an individual right now. First, I'm in favor of flying the POW MIA flag, I think it's fine. I'm in favor of Veterans Day, I'm in favor of parades, one thing you learn in the Army is to march, and they're very good at marching. But I have one concern here, and that is what I consider to be symbolic patriotism. And this is, and what I'm saying is, everything is fine, but I just want to make sure that supporting veterans is more than simply flying a flag, or saying the pledge or something like that. When I go to Lowe's, I get a 10% discount, and the person, if you have a cashier, they always say, "Thank you for your service," which to me is, it's bothersome sometimes. If you want to support veterans, I have two suggestions, both regarding your reps in Congress. You write them, you call them, and you say, "Fully fund the Veterans Administration, do not let it be privatized, make sure it's organized well, and it's taking care of people." Over half a million homeless today are veterans. Fully fund the VA. Secondly, I'm sure you're probably aware, the last declared war in United States history was World War II. We've gone through a number of wars since then. The United States Constitution, Article 1, says Congress declares war, not the President. Going to war, I'm not talking about defensive, going to war should be debated. If you do that, you may not have as many wars, and you may not have as many veterans. So my point is simply do more than simply flying a flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I hope you all had a great weekend. I had a busy one. Speaking on ordinance FY2403 Specialized Energy Code, I read it again tonight, and I see it's supposed to be sent out to advertising. I just wanted to make a couple, I hope that happens, because we need more conversations around that. I wanted to point out some things. The master plan that was approved in 2022, Policy 871, Commit to Environmental Sustainability in All Town Bridgewater Policies. The master plan vision statement says, "The town will plan for resilience to climate change and reduce its overall environmental impact by using renewable energy sources, sustainable development practices, and innovative transportation solutions." Moreover, it says under the Facilities and Services section, "Provides efficient, reliable, high-quality services and well-maintained facilities, reduce municipal energy use, sustainability..." The master plan incorporates sustainable and resilient recommendations, range from hazard mitigation to green infrastructure, waste order management. Public facilities and services recommendations anticipate climate change and extreme weather and flooding. Moreover, it talks about educating the public and taking care of that, and on page 222, it says, "Commit to environmental sustainability in all of Bridgewater's policies." That said, I hope you will send it to advertising so we can actually have a further conversation, as I said earlier. I also want to speak to order FY25, FY09, that's on the agenda. The only comment I'm going to make, the Town River Landing is not, is not designated as a park. The language in that order suggests that it is a park. It's not an official park. I like what they're doing down there, but in the 2014 master plan, that parcel was called out for a very excellent mixed-use development property. That said, I think the council needs to begin to push to have that property be a park so that everything that's done there is legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak, please?
Yes, Nick Vaggus, 23 Church Street, Bridgewater, Mass. I was born in Bridgewater and lived on Church Street for over 50 years. Wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I got a little aggravated on the way over. The traffic coming around that Common is a horror show. When I was a kid, we used to ride our bicycles around the Common. If I want to cross the Common now, I take my bicycle, not going to ride it, I walk it across, because people don't want to hit the bicycle, they don't mind hitting me. On the way over here, I'm across at the church over there, excuse me, I'm at the library, and I'm trying to cross, and the cars just keep coming. I take the flashlight, and I'm waving it. The cars still don't stop, so finally somebody did stop, flashed their lights. Now I'm afraid to go in the middle of the road because I don't know if the cars are flying this way. The story is, in my opinion, when they come up, up, up the Common, once they hit the congregational church, they just nail it and go faster. Come in the other direction, they have to stop for all the lights. That's all I got to say, just that the, the police do a good job, I'm going to say that, they're up, they're checking, but it's just that it's a horror show around that Common, and you're talking about doing something with the Common. I think you ought to do something with the crosswalks and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anybody else like to come up and speak, please? Please come on up.
Lieutenant Derek Bennett, 180 Main Street. Ladies and gentlemen, I have come before to discuss a project that the Bridgewater or State University Composite Squadron is doing as a project. Thought this would be a great opportunity to introduce that we are a contributor and partner in wreaths across America. The program is the objective to place a wreath of honor on the resting place of every man and woman who has served and is buried in the national cemeteries throughout the country. In our area, that would be the National Cemetery at Otis. We are currently looking to raise donations to purchase wreaths that will be placed on the resting places during a special ceremony on December 11th at the cemetery. The wreaths are sold for an amount of $17 that will purchase a wreath. We will then have that presented to us to place on a headstone or marker in the cemetery. They will not be sent to individual homes or such, but I will also add, if you go through our website, which I have here, www.reevesacrossamerica.org/ma008p, again, backslash ma008p, we will be able to mark if there is a site or an individual who would be specifically honored by a particular individual. The objective and the goal we try to set, as many as possible, and we would be greatly honored to have members of the Bridgewater community join us in this memorial to men and women, brothers and sisters, families and friends who have fallen in the name of our nation. That's kind of the idea. This was at Arlington, somewhat similar to the field at Otis. If you would like, I can, may I ask if the, the address may be posted on one of the, so people can take, thank you, sir. And again, on behalf of the Bridgewater State University Composite Squadron, thank you for this opportunity, and thank you to the men and women in this room who have made that sacrifice.
Thank you so much. Please come right up. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Please, come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Dave Sidon, 70 Deerfield, and, oh, this is so, this is something else. I want to thank all of you guys for everything that you do for the town, and I also like to thank everybody that came here tonight. Shows that somebody is going to care. So about this flag thing, I want to get back to the flags. I'm a Marine Corps vet, I'm a Ranger, and I got to tell you that I don't, I don't get any self-esteem from a flag, I don't get any self-esteem for any kind of iconography that anybody posts in a public forum. I'm filled with my own self-esteem, my own self-worth is way, way up, as it's because of who I am, it's internal. The thing with the flag is this is about that, what, 80,000-plus people, Americans, that never came back, people that, that died, and people that just didn't, they're missing, they were POWs. It's about them. It doesn't have anything to do with self-esteem, doesn't have anything to do with marginalization. I don't feel less marginal because there's not a Marine Corps flag or a Ranger flag. I don't need that, I already got that. This is about a remembrance, so that when people drive by and they see the American flag and they see the POW MIA flag, hopefully, it's going to give them a thought of, there's people that didn't come back, there's people that actually suffered in captivity for our, for our country. Those 80, 80,000 people, you know, that they're in that category, who knows how many of them were LGBTQ+, or, you know, African-American, or anything, any kind of subset. We, they represented everybody, and, you know, this is just something that I just ask, we do the right thing. They didn't come back, they really didn't, you know? And that's all I got to say, I guess. Thank you for...
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Anybody else, please, like to come up and speak?
Tom Carson, 39 Austin Street. Thank you for having us. Like my brother-in-arms behind me, that flag stands for the, our brothers and sisters who never come back. We don't even know where they are. To this day, this government is looking for them to bring them home. And not for nothing, you don't have the red, white, and blue without those men and women. And those, I didn't have to go to war, they did, they didn't come home, and that's what it symbolizes. That MIA POW flag blends in with the background of the red, white, and blue, that's what it belongs, nothing personal, nothing bravado about it, it's just what it is. And it shows our younger children, our grandchildren, that that flag didn't just get made, it was one with blood, sweat, and tears, and people died for it, and that's a symbol that we can't change, I'm sorry, it belongs up there. One and both belong there at the same time, all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Please come forward.
My name is Mary Bogal, 50 Sherwood Lane. I have 22 members in my family that served in the military. I was very lucky, they all came home, but that flag represents the ones that didn't. And every time I ride by it, it reminds me of my mom and dad, who both served in World War II but are now deceased. And I think every family that rides by that, that's a symbol to them. Doesn't take away from all the other flags, but that flag should never come down for one second. It belongs with the American flag. That's what America is about. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Oh, please.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I felt like I had to. Obviously, I probably am wearing on my body who I support. I did not serve, but I am the daughter of a Vietnam veteran who died from serving his country. I don't have an issue with any people. Every group, and I apologize because I am freezing in here, I'm shaking, I don't know how you do it, but anyways, people, everybody deserves their spot in the sun, they deserve to be treated equally, everybody. I don't think, I think Bridgewater is a great community for that, I could be wrong, but that's what I see. I teach preschool in this town, we have all kinds of children come in, I foster children, I've never said no to a child based on their sexual identity, or their race, or their religion, or anything like that. Everybody deserves to be treated with respect, but most, first and foremost, they get that respect because of the people that fought for our country. And the people that didn't come back, they need to be honored, and they need to be honored every day. And I think the fact that we haven't flown that for so long is a huge problem, and I'm glad that we're tackling it, and I hope we can find some kind of compromise where everybody's happy, but in the end, I think that our veterans deserve to see that they're still respected and that we appreciate everything that they did. And I apologize, I forgot to introduce myself. I knew I was going to do that. I'm Lisa Bazell-Curley, and I live at 91 Atkinson Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else? Go on once, go on twice. All right, again, thank you everyone who came up and spoke tonight, we appreciate that. Moving on to item E, we have an appointment this evening, and it's for the Finance Committee, Derek M. Bennett, for the term of 2024 to 2027. Council Indy here recommended Derek for this appointment. Do you have any words you'd like to add, Council Indy? Sure, Derek Bennett had previously, he's moved here to Bridgewater from the town of Halifax. He previously served as a school committee member there, so has a lot of familiarity with finances, and he's currently a candidate, almost.
with finances, and he's currently a candidate, almost a PhD candidate. He has financial experience, and I know that he will take the job very seriously and will faithfully attend the meeting, so we'll have Quarm to conduct town business.
Very good.
And I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve by Mr. Linde. Do I have a second around that motion? Second by Ms. Strickles. Any further discussion on the candidate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Linde, for bringing it forward, and.
Congratulations.
Thank you to Mr. Bennett.
Thank you very much, Committee. I can now breathe.
Next is hearings, which we do not have.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I make an emotion to move an item out of order?
Certainly, what would you like to do?
D F Y 2025-010, the proposed ordinance of the raising of the POW MIA flag.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to bring up Section L, Item E, out of order.
Mr. President, you would take the whole, if I don't punch my microphone over, you would take that whole section out of order.
Whole section out of order.
Right, you wouldn't take one piece of business, you would take that section, you would deal with that business, and then you would move back to the agenda.
You have the order of the question here.
Okay.
Yeah, so could you take that one?
All right, let's, yeah, let's go ahead, let's go ahead then with license transaction first, and we'll come back around and take your motion up.
Because it's a specific time.
There's a pending motion and a second, so.
Do you want to withdraw it for the moment?
Withdraw, I'll leave that up to you all.
Do you want to withdraw it temporarily until we get through this next item?
I'll withdraw temporarily.
All right, so let's go ahead then with Item G, license transactions. This is Petition P dash 2025 dash 004, change of stock interest for Champions Indoor Golf Inc., and we do have the attorney for Champions Indoor Golf here.
Hey, good evening, thank you for taking me out of order. Matthew Porter, I'm the attorney for Champions Indoor Golf. This is just an internal transfer of stock, when these guys opened up, there was four partners, three of them are buying out one of the partners. There's no changes to the operation of the business, no change to license manager, so it's just an internal transfer of stock, and it's all the same. Three existing shareholders, pretty straightforward.
Okay, very good. Any questions to the attorney from any of the councilors?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second by Mr. McKinnon. All right, and again, thank you for coming. All those in favor of approving the license transaction, Petition P 205-004, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None seen. Motion carries, thank you again for coming.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Ms. McGrath, do you want to bring your item back out of order again?
Yes.
We'll just take the whole time, okay. So the motion is to bring Item L, Legislation for Action, out of order. Ms. McGrath made the motion, are you still seconding?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of taking Item L out of order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. So we will definitely start with the initial items that we have here first. First one, let's get it out of order here. Let's see, so the first one, Item A, is Order OFY 25-013, Transfer Order Salary to Expense. Again, this is a typical transfer order that we run across, but Ms. Robinson like to make any comments on this?
This is a order to transfer money from two salary line items to two expense items. One is for the town contract for the town, acting town manager services, and the other is for animal control services.
Very good.
So moved.
Okay, yes, so I believe the Finance Committee met recently and voted 5-0 to approve.
Budget and Finance did a while ago.
As well. So do I have a motion to approve this item?
I make the motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strickles. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, thank you. Move to Item B, Order OFY 25-014, Contractual Payments. Again, I'll refer this to Ms. Robinson for a brief description.
This is to pay out contractual obligations to three employees, one is a retiree of Police Department, the other two were positions that were in unions and then left those positions become department heads, and so it's a payout of accumulated benefits that they will no longer receive after they have become non-union.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Again, FinComet and voted 5-0 to approve, and I believe our own Budget and Finance did as well.
Yep.
So any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you all. Item C coming up here, Order O-FY 25-015, Transfer Order Public Education Government for Town Council Chambers. Again, I'll ask Ms. Robinson for a description.
These are funds that come from the PEG access dollars that the town receives, they're generated from cable, cable fees paid by residents. We're planning to spend $20,000, actually have spent it to replace the encoder, which helps us more efficiently stream the meetings that we do, these meetings that we're in right now, and also replace some of your microphones.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. No motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Robinson. Again, to let everyone know, FinComet and voted 5-0 to approve.
Budget and Finance, 3-0.
3-0 as well. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item D, Order OFY 25-016, Acceptance of a Gift from Bridgewater State University. Again, Ms. Robinson for a brief description.
So this is a gift that the town has received from Bridgewater State in the last number of years, it's for $55,000, meant to help support several of our departments that, in their way, provide services to the university. $55,000 is equally split between the Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works, enables them to purchase items for their operations that are not otherwise covered in the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Motion to approve?
So moved, second.
And second by Mr. McKinnon. Again, FinCom voted 5-0 to approve this.
And Budget and Finance voted 3-0.
3-0 there. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, and now, Item E, Resolution R F Y 25-002, A Resolution to Raise the POW MIA Flag. This was brought forward by councilors Chase and Strickles, so I'll ask each counselor if they'd like to make any comments on the resolution.
I would just like to say, Mr. President, that we had introduced this at our last session because there had been a good deal of discussion in the council, and certainly in the community, with respect to the POW MIA flag, and that discussion continues. And this was simply a statement affirming the conviction of the town council to support the flying of the POW MIA flag. I realize that there is an additional item on our agenda this evening with respect to the flag. I frankly think that this is still a, an important resolution to seek the approval of. I think that it still represents the consensus of the council on this matter, and I would hope that we could put this forward for approval. Thank you.
And Ms. Strickles, anything there?
Just to echo Counselor Chase's sentiments, I also would state that our wanting and desire for this resolution has no bearing on our want and desire to equally fly flags that hold specific meaning to not only us personally, but to the members of this town. So I think that there is a way that we can make sure that everyone feels seen and heard here, and that we might need to take it into separate entities and take this now and then focus on the other flags after that, and still prioritize them maybe in their own right, which I believe they deserve. So just anyone who spoke, I thank you for that, we hear you and we understand, and we're going to also prioritize those flags as well.
Thank you, Ms. Strickles. So I will ask for a motion, a second for any further discussion on the items, so do I have a motion to approve by Ms. Strickles?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, Mr. McKinnon.
Then Adeline can open it.
Do you have a?
He can open it.
Ms. Ellerberg, if you have a.
I just wanted to ask.
Use your mic.
How does your ordinance differ from Ms. McGrath's? What is the difference between the two of them? We've got two things about the POW MIA flag on tonight's agenda. How are the two different? That's just a question that all of you.
If I may, Mr. President, the.
Yes, please, Ms. Chase.
What's before us right now is a resolution. It's just a sentiment of the council. It's a sense of what is the council's consensus, if you will, on this matter. As had been explained in our previous session by the, by the town attorney, a resolution is an aspirational action or measure. It does not have force of law, but it's important because it does indicate to the entire community the will of the council. And in this case, it demonstrates that the council does fully support the flying of the MIA, POW MIA flag. The separate matter coming before us later on the agenda is an amendment to an existing ordinance.
I see. Okay, so, and you said that the POW MIA flag will be flown at all times, says the language in your resolution?
That's exactly what it says.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Robinson?
Through you to the town administration, I'm not sure if this was discussed prior, I'm just kind of curious logistically, how many flags can actually be flown, like, I'm literally talking like number of clips and all that stuff. Does that make sense? Do we know?
It does, but I'm afraid I don't know the answer.
Does anyone?
Well, in talking to the Veteran Service Officer, there, you can, American flag, POW MIA flag, the three flags that can fly on the flagpole, they have to be of certain sizes. I went to the BCCR meeting and listened as well. I'm hopeful and wishful that there's a possibility of some kind of compromise. We have multiple flagpoles in the downtown area, the Academy Building, the library, across in the common, and here, you know, so I just hope that we can not have a flag war.
Yeah, I'm, thank you. That's, one, that's helpful in terms of the logistics of it, and two, I support that. I really, I hope that we don't squabble over technicalities and we can come to an amendment.
And one more point, I'm sorry, the, if the flag is, this is my understanding, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, that if the flag is flown at half-mast, at the direction of the governor or the president, the US flag gets lowered to half-mast, the POW MIA flag would then go down, and there wouldn't be room on the pole for a third flag, and that's gonna, would cause other issues, so.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask another question?
Ms. Ellerberg?
Just so I understand things, we have a resolution before us, and Ms. McGrath's thing is an ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Amendment to an existing ordinance, yes.
So that we could vote for both of them, and they would both be enforced, is that fair to say?
If I may, I think the answer to that question is this, that the resolution isn't calling for any specific action except that it's our sentiment as a council, that the POW MIA flag will be flown at all times. It doesn't specify where, or how, or, it makes nothing else but what you see on the page.
May I ask Ms. McGrath to compare? Excuse me, through you, Mr. President.
I just want to make a point, Mr. Chase, it does say in the resolution that it's before the Academy Building at all times, it does list a location.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
We could amend that if.
Follow-up question, Ms. Ellerberg?
My follow-up question would be, if Ms. McGrath could discuss your ordinance, does it basically say all the time for the two flags?
It goes by the federal law that says as long as the United States flag is flying, the POW flag will fly underneath it, so it doesn't come down.
All right, so that would be the ordinance, okay?
The amendment to the ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Point of information through you to the town attorney, the first on the resolution, could that be amended to not say the Academy Building? If the makers of those motions would do it, and then we could possibly address.
So, so I think Mr. Chase said it well, a resolution is essentially from you all saying to the administration, hey, it's our will, we would like to see the flag always flying. It's not in ordinance, it doesn't require it, so you can absolutely amend this. At the end of the day, the teeth it has are really in that you're expressing your aspirations to the town manager, essentially saying, hey, this is how, this is the will of the council, this is what we feel. There's no enforcement mechanism for a resolution.
Right.
So, yeah, you absolutely could amend it.
Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I ask you a question? So if this goes, and say they amend it later, that the POW flag is not at the Academy Building, what would stand if mine passed?
Well, so the, we can talk about yours, but those are, they're two different theories. So the resolution is aspirational. It's saying the will of this particular group of councilors in this particular moment want to tell the administration by vote that this is what they'd like to see happen. Yours is an amendment to an ordinance by virtue of a new ordinance, which then would require by law, because it would be the law of Bridgewater, that the flag has to be flown as you vindicated in your ordinance. So one is a requirement of the town going forward, regardless of the composition or makeup of the council. This is saying this group of councilors, as they sit today, this is what they would like to see happen. So one's aspirational, and one's a requirement. One is a moment in time, one goes on indefinitely until it's changed by a new ordinance. So that, I hope that answers your question.
I always just want to make clear, because if, if this one passes and the one I wrote doesn't, then this one stands.
This one stands as a resolution. So, so, yes, it indicates to the administration that this council would like to see the POW MIA flag raised before the Academy Building at all times. That's what this says. That doesn't mean that a year from now, if there's new councilors, and it doesn't hold any weight in terms of enforcement. The council can't say, well, you didn't put it up. Well, no, it's not a requirement to put it up, it's saying this is the will of the council as it is today.
Thank you, that clarifies it.
Good.
Thank you. Ms. Ellerberg, you got a question?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, on procedure, you said that we would have to have the second one become a resolution from the ordinance? Ms. McGrath's thing would go from ordinance to resolution, or am I misunderstanding?
I think you're misunderstanding, that wasn't what I was saying.
We're talking about the resolution right now, we haven't brought up the ordinance for discussion.
Yes, and may I also, through you, Mr. President, just ask, the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution, if we pass it, does it negate the further passage of the other?
No. A resolution never negates anything, because a resolution does not require an action. A resolution is not, is not a law in a sense that it requires someone to do something or prohibits someone from doing something. A resolution is a statement made by the council in a formal capacity.
Yes. Through you, Mr. President, so therefore they do not cancel each other out, and we are capable of passing both of them tonight?
No, you, I believe. No, I believe the other ones are on for first reading.
We're just starting on the ordinance.
Resolution is the only thing that I believe is on for legislation for action. The other is an agenda item as new legislation for first reading.
Okay, it's in process, so we cannot accomplish it tonight. Okay.
Can't pass an ordinance on the first reading, no.
Right, I understand that. I did not realize it was first reading.
Mr. Chase, did you have a question earlier?
I was going to suggest that we amend the resolution, R-FY-25-002, to remove the front of the Academy Building.
So, I would say just stating that the flag be raised at all times.
Yes.
Instead of, and taking out before the Academy Building.
I would second that motion.
Making a second for discussion. All right. Do you have any further discussion on...
No, I just think it might help us come up with a resolution to get, to have everybody pleased.
Ms. Chase, do you have any comments on the motion?
No, I think that's actually a very valuable suggestion.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Lindy, building upon your proposed amendment, which I think is very good, could we add, or rather than taking out at the Academy Building, put at the Academy Building or other building, or other flagpole?
I just think that...
Because then that gives the fluidity.
I think you need to vote the amendment first.
First, exactly.
And then if you want to propose another amendment, let's see what happens with the original amendment first.
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, yeah. Ms. McGrath, do you have a question?
The amendment is so that the POW MIA flag will be placed someplace else, flown somewhere else, not...
I believe it gives flexibility on the flagpole instead of just naming one location.
The location will not be...
Right.
It could be, it could be the flagpole in front of the Academy. It could be the flagpole on the common. It could be any flagpole.
The memorial building or the library.
It could be, it could encompass more flagpoles. The only thing I would certainly add as well is, you know, the flagpole that is at the common is the 9/11 memorial flagpole. It definitely, I think it's even bigger than the one at the common. I think placing the POW MIA flag there would be of great importance, and I like to see it at that flagpole as well. When we get into your ordinance, I think there could be further discussion as far as options on where to put flags. But I know in other towns, like Eastbridge, they have a federally designated flagpole. They have a state and local designated flagpole. So, there might be some discussions we might need to have as a council as well. But at least it doesn't, it gives us more options on where to put the POW MIA flag. And we're all in favor, I believe, as a council, on making sure that flag is flying. But it just opens it up a little bit more, for we can put it in multiple places and not just naming it in one location.
I'm just confused as to why we're moving the POW MIA flag and not the other flags, because we do have the library flag. I mean, I'm for all of them, like Mr. Chase brought up, like, you know, thinking that the flag would be like a totem pole. And actually, Mr. Chase, when I thought about it, it could be like a totem pole, because totem poles, and I looked it up, because I thought what you said was interesting, and a totem pole celebrates important milestones, and the creation of the American flag, and American becoming a country are both milestones. Also, totem poles commemorate the life of a chief. So, we would officially remember the life of our soldiers with the POW flag. And lastly, a totem pole of visual representations of culture, which the other flags will represent. So, our flagpole could be like a totem pole, be it by showing our history, remembering our people, and displaying our culture. So, I'd like to see all three to stay on one flagpole. But if you're choosing which flag is going to be, it's just going to cause problems.
Well, again, this, by, I think, by taking out what is being proposed, we're not limiting it just to the Academy. We're talking about all flagpoles could have the POW MIA flag flying at those poles.
Right. That's what I don't see, and why we're moving, having the option to move the POW flag and MIA without having the option of moving the other flags.
I get, but that's not the resolution that we have in front of us. Right now, we're just dealing with a POW MIA flag.
I was just wondering why that came about, why you picked one flag over the others. That's all.
Any other comments, plain council?
Just a point of personal privilege, if I may respond to the counselor. In no manner did my remark at our last meeting with respect to a totem pole intend to in any way denigrate totem poles. I was simply trying to point out that I thought that the presence of three flags on one staff, if you will, really didn't, was perhaps a little confusing, perhaps a little disorienting, certainly, at least, I think, unexpected in most cases. And for that reason, I thought it did not enhance the presence of any of the flags, in my view personally. Have three banners on one pole. That was the intention I had in making that remark.
I didn't take it as an insult. I just thought about what you said and consider it, and then I thought, well, what do totem poles represent? And that's, that led me down. But I never thought you meant it in a bad way.
And in respect of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I commend you for having brought that forward.
Mr. Lindy?
And on that point, too, we have two flags in the month of June. We could very well have other flags in other months, and it might resolve this. I mean, I know in a nearby city, they have flags going up and down, but they have multiple poles, too. So, that's something we can look at as well.
And there are comments from any councilors? So, on the motion of just removing before the Academy Building on this resolution, I might actually want to get a roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
No.
Yes?
No.
No.
I'm confused.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
No.
Six in favor, three opposed.
So, now, on the resolution as a whole, which we had a motion, a second for, I would like a voice vote on the resolution. All those in favor of passing the resolution to raise the POW MIA flag as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
There's one. I don't hear anything else, so it seems like eight to one. And the motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to item F, proposed zoning ordinance, D-FY-24-003, Chapter 7.7, Specialized Energy Code, by Counselor Chase. Well, I'll give you the full of it. Mr. Chase, could you give us some introduction on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. This item is, represents a matter of opt-in legislation that the council would have an opportunity to bring forward to the town if we so choose. It's, it would comply with the, with state regulations, which are all part of the Green Communities' overall legislation. And let me just, if I could, say that we've had some experience in discussing this matter over a period of some time. Most recently, the Rules and Procedures Committee did meet to consider this. We unfortunately were unable to arrive at a recommendation for the council. We simply felt that we did not have adequate information to make an informed recommendation as to approval or not. I think we all agreed that there is a great deal of significance to this matter, potentially to this measure, and we really need a little more opportunity, a little more guidance with respect to all of the provisions, some of the technical provisions and other matters. I think I would, if you'd consider this, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order to permit Mr. Hunt to make a few additional comments with respect to this matter, if he is willing to do that.
Okay, there's a motion to here in a second. That's fine. I know I saw some emails regarding maybe a presentation by the Energy Committee and Mr. Hunt. I don't know if he's prepared to do so tonight. Mr. Hunt, would you be prepared to speak on it tonight, or would you like to do it on our next meeting?
Carlton Hunt, Energy Committee Chair. I'd like an opportunity to have a deep discussion with you with respect to this. I think some of the information that you received in the past was confusing. There are statements that are incomplete, made by individuals in this room. What I will say here right now is, the state did a study from the base code to the stretch code. The specialized code goes a step further. The study that they had done looked at a 4,000-square-foot house, five bedrooms, a 2,100-square-foot house, three bedrooms, a townhouse of 21 square feet per unit, three bedrooms, a four-story multifamily, 2,100-square-foot unit, and a six-unit multifamily. They looked at gas heat, and they looked at electric heat. They compared the cost to build each of those six elements with gas heat and electric heat. Yes, the cost goes up a little bit when you do gas. They also looked at the residents, the owners' savings over the lifetime, 2030, I believe it is. And in that case, gas provided a positive result to the owners of the buildings, except for one case, which was the 2,100-square-foot. The specialized code addresses homes 4,000 square feet and greater. When you look at the electric, you have the cost to build, but there are refunds and rebates and tax incentives that go to the builder. In that case, for example, a 4,000-square-foot house might cost the builder an extra $3,000. They would save $20,000 for an all-electric home. For a six-multi, six-unit multifamily house, 1,400 square feet per unit, they would cost about $2,300 more to build under gas. They would save $15,660 with all-electric. If you look at the amount of carbon that's reduced from the environment, greenhouse gases, the ratio of gas to electric heat, basically, the gas heat would save 1.5 tons, and the electric would save 4.3. You do that ratio, and it comes to be about four or five. If you look at all the other ones, the ratios for electric being more beneficial to the homeowner and the environment and the world is about two to six times. That's one of the elements I had wanted to discuss with you. There are four reasons for the specialized code to be adopted. It requires large homes greater than 4,000 square feet of conditioned floor area to be a zero-energy or all-electric. Zero energy means it doesn't, it's not, it's a net-sum gain. You may have a solar on top, and it puts energy into the house in the daytime and into the grid in daytime, and it uses it at night. Net zero means the net process is zero. All-electric is all-electric. It requires a passive house certification for multifamily buildings of over 12,000 square feet. Commercial-scale multifamily buildings of over, must be certified to meet passive house standards. We have a passive house in Bridgewater. It's the McElwain Development New Building. It has solar on top. The future, if you think about cost in the future, it decreases the cost of retrofits for homeowners who eventually want to install electric equipment. Build it now, later on, when they want to change something, it reduces their cost. That's a savings to the homeowner. There's more, but I'm just going to say, it adds new requirements for onsite renewable energy generation. In other words, you can have on-the-roof or ground-mounted solars, or roof wind, or a windmill in your backyard. You can do all of that kind of thing in order to generate and reduce carbon into the atmosphere. And we all know global climate change. We've seen two hurricanes of higher intensity than we've ever seen, faster warming. I know one of the fastest-warming bodies of water is the Gulf of Maine. Sea level rise is happening. If you deny it, just go to some of the gauges that measure it. It's happening. So, anyway, I'm going to finish with just this. Buildings following the mixed-fuel and zero-energy pathways must generate energy onsite, while buildings following the all-electric pathway will need to be solar-ready. So, there's options in there. There's a lot more to be said about this. There's all sorts of stuff on the web, but I wanted to make sure people understood, because I've heard the comment, it's just going to cost the builder more money. Yeah, in some cases. Not all-electric. Owner saves energy, and the globe actually has a chance of getting greenhouse gas reductions and global warming to get under control. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'll open up the councilors, but I'll just say, if we, so this is up for, just referring for advertising tonight, would you like to make any type of greater presentation at our next meeting, if we bring this up for a vote, that would, that would, that the Energy Committee would like to put in front of us?
I would do that, because I would provide a PowerPoint that actually talks about the things I read about our master plan.
Okay. Would you like to put that together for next meeting?
I've generated many things in terms of solarizing town, public property in here. There's all sorts of places you can generate revenue if we start to move down this road correctly.
Mr. President, just...
Yes, Ms. Ellenberg?
I am reviewing the ordinance now. It appears that it's a proposed zoning ordinance, but when I reflect back on, or look down to the bottom with the referrals, I don't see that it was ever referred to the planning board.
It was referred to, excuse me, sir. It was referred to the planning board the first time it came up. The minutes say it was referred to the CED department. The planning board has not reviewed it.
So, it would have to go before the planning board?
First, before we give the advertising.
Or any zoning, yeah, correct.
Correct.
So, while it appears it's gone to this body's subcommittee, so you've essentially...
Went to Rules and Procedures.
You've essentially checked that box. It is a zoning ordinance, so it does need to go before the planning board.
So, I would then, I'm glad, Mr. Dr. Hunt?
I've had a conversation with someone who says, the town code, is the town code zoning, or is that a regulation?
Well, this, the way this is written, it talks about, "The town council assembled votes to amend the Bridgewater zoning ordinance, Section 7 Special Regulations to add Section 7.7." So, if you're amending a zoning ordinance...
So, it's a zoning ordinance with regulations underneath it.
You have to go to the planning board.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. So, what I would then suggest is then a motion to send to a joint committee of the planning board and the CED, see?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. McGrath?
I have one, Mr. President. I would like to have the National Grid come before the town council. I'd like to know how they're going to have all this electricity on them. We're also charged for different things on our electrical bill. I don't have solar, I don't have electric car, and I'm getting charged on my electric bill for some, and a lot of residents have come up to me. So, maybe they could talk about this code. We could ask them questions, how they're going to handle it, and, you know, is coal the main source to make electricity for them? And to go over the charges that they have on our electric bill that I, I'm not using. I don't have solar panels or any of that, but they're charging me for it. And a lot of residents are asking.
We'll have to see what we can do on that situation, as far as, you know, getting National Grid or something to come on in.
I mean, it's a huge move for the town. It's going to go electric, so...
I understand. I, we have, obviously, Mr. Rule here. Mr. Rule, do you have any comments regarding this particular piece of ordinance, or any input at all on it?
No, I agree. If it's a zoning amendment, then having the CED and the planning board weigh in on it, I think is appropriate.
Okay, very good. Ms. Robinson, then Ms. Ellenberg.
Actually, she, yeah, she was first. Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we invite the National Grid that Ms. McGrath has suggested, and that we have a hearing, and we also have the National Grid, and therefore we have perhaps a more extended hearing that might bridge across several sessions. But this is very, very important for our town.
I totally understand.
Mr. President? Mr. Chase?
Thank you. If I may, remind the council...
If I may remind the council, we have actually already had a presentation on this subject, on this very measure, by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. They are the authority. They have written and proposed this legislation. National Grid is just an electric supplier. They have nothing to do with this. And, you know, if there's a personal matter that anyone has with respect to their National Grid billing procedures, they need to discuss that on an individual basis with the company. But we've already had a fairly lengthy presentation and I'm sure we still have available the slides and material that was presented. But again, National Grid has really nothing to say about any of this.
Ms. Robinson, as extension of that discussion.
Thank you. So many points were raised because I was going to actually say that I do recall a presentation that Mr. Hunt had done. Unfortunately, several of the councillors weren't here, so I do wonder if it would be helpful if perhaps through assistance by maybe Debbie, if that, if that link could be brought up or, you know, somehow we recall when that presentation was held. And I absolutely, I was going to raise the exact same point. That actually becomes a lobbying issue if we ask a corporation to give their perspective about something that affects our legislation and codes and zoning codes. So I too would agree with making sure we, I believe it makes sense to have additional perspectives, right? Because it is complicated. There's, there's lots of pros and there's lots of cons, so it would be helpful to have diverse perspectives, but from folks who have the appropriate roles.
Yes. Through you, Mr. President.
Ms. Ellenberg.
I agree that would be an inappropriate lobbying situation. So yes, then we should not do National Grid, but we should have that presentation presented to us again live.
I don't know if we should have it live again. Everything, it was taped, so I would refer the councillors to the tape of that meeting and review that presentation. There was also handouts that were given out, so this council secretary could catch you that handout again if that's what's necessary. Dr. Hunt.
I can forward the presentation to you if you wish.
I'd love it.
I would love that.
But I could, could I add two more, two or three more things?
Please, go ahead.
I learned today, I sent you all an email on this, I learned today that there will be coming, it's called a PON grant, that can substantially provide competitive grants, I believe. It's not, it's not been released, but it's coming to enable energy upgrades to various municipal buildings and other things. That's coming. If we don't adopt this, we're out of the game. We struck out. The other thing is National Grid will come, like they, I think they have done it with the new fire station, they will come and talk about the best things to do in that building. So grid can come on an individual basis for sure. They will also do assessments, I learned today. They would do an assessment of the townhouse. So it's not lobbying, it's what they do with the money we pay them to come to towns to make it less energy use.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. So, Ms. McGrath?
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Mr. Hunt. I'm not lobbying, I just want two opinions. And as for the bill, I had 10 residents question me, so I can't call for their, and they said they get the runaround on the bills that they're getting charged by National Grid. So I figure if I could get National Grid here to help me understand how they're going to, you know, if we do do this, how much more electricity and stuff, just to question them on that side. But then, if they're here, maybe they could answer some of these questions that, like 10 residents have emailed me about. So it's not my personal, my personal bill, I can call, but it's happening to a lot of people and their electricity bill is doubling. So what's going to happen if we, you know, step into this one where we have more electrical? Can National Grid handle it?
Okay. So, Mr. Hunt, no, Dr. Hunt.
I'm not sure if all of you remember, but we are in the process of becoming an energy aggregation community. There was a hearing, I didn't attend it because I was out of town, but I think there's some things going, happening around that. That would address the power supply side of your bill. The three major elements: power, transmission, distribution. Transmission's those great big wires, 13 KEV. Distribution is what's out on the street here now, 1.1300 KEV, I believe. So there are opportunities for towns to have buildings that they need to have looked at by National Grid. That's my point. But there are grants coming, but let's not strike out.
Well, I think our first step, Ms. Robinson, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to ask, just to kind of remind us, what would be the sequence and flow of events here in this scenario?
Exactly. So I think right now where we're standing is at least sending this to a joint committee of the planning board and CEDC so they can look at this situation. Then when it comes back again to us, we can potentially set up something with the Energy Committee as a presentation in conjunction with National Grid or something along those lines. But we've got to take step one first and have a go to the Subcommittee of Planning Board and CEDC. So that's what's on the table right now. So let's get that accomplished first and then we can work on the parts going forward after that. So that being said, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor of sending this to Planning Board and CEDC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll go through the Subcommittee first and then when it comes back, we'll look to get Energy Committee's information and possible National Grid if we need to get National Grid.
One more point. Administrative code has the Energy Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Town Clerk coming before you to report on your activity. So if I come before you as an Energy Committee, I would like to update you on many other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Is there a timetable so we don't miss the boat? I don't know if I can ask Mr. Hunt that question.
Is there a timetable, Mr. Hunt?
Well, the ordinance says July 1st, 2024. I think you can adopt it at any time. I didn't ask that question to Ms. Sullivan, but I think you can adopt it and she's working with other communities to adopt it.
2024 would be 2025 because we already passed it.
2024.
Oh, was? It already passed?
No.
Through the president?
That's what the ordinance says. It will become effective 2024.
Oh, I see. Gotcha. Okay.
So we're a little bit.
Behind.
Nitpicky, but a little behind the eight ball.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Do you have a question, Ms. Ellenberg?
I just wanted to ask through you, Mr. President, if we pass this, is it mandatory on builders or is it optional? If we pass it, is it mandatory town-wide or am I misunderstanding again?
I believe the zoning code, I'll let the experts talk to that, but I believe the zoning code's mandatory.
It would be mandatory for new construction.
So it would be mandatory.
This is for new construction, right. It's not passed, but it also, well, renovation, what I talked about is renovations down the road.
Okay. So for new construction, okay, mandatory, okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Thank you, guys. All right, let's move on to item G.
Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Next up, we have ordinance DFY 24-007, Proposed Amendment to Ordinance Part II, Admin Code, Chapter 1, Article 2, Section 1. And this was brought forth by Counselor Chase, so I'll give the floor to Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. This measure relates to what is commonly referred to as the Mullen Rule in Massachusetts, and I'll explain that as briefly as I can. There are certain committees, boards, and commissions in every town, including our town, which undertake hearings when a petitioner, when a citizen comes forward before one of those boards or commissions to seek a certain kind of, a certain grant. It might be someone going before a planning board, for example, for a, you know, a site plan approval or for a special permit, someone appearing before a conservation commission seeking issuance of an, of an order of conditions, or someone appearing before a zoning board of appeals looking for a variance. So we refer to all those types of hearings as adjudicatory hearings because those bodies, those various boards and commissions, which our charter refers to as multi-member organizations, they have the power to actually make a ruling and issue whatever that permit or license or whatever it is. And so in that, in that sense, it's referred to as an adjudicatory proceeding. Now, what this rule does is, well, let me start by saying, and I'll start at the beginning. If any member of one of those boards or commissions or committees is not present during one of the sessions at which that particular topic is being discussed, then they are, they would not be able to actually participate in a vote because if they've missed a meeting, they're not in possession of all the information and that particular member would not be able to vote on whatever is the ultimate disposition of that matter. And that sometimes creates a problem with respect to having a, an ample number of members of the board present to take that final vote. So the Mullen Rule provides a kind of a relief valve. It provides to that member who has missed one, but not more than one, but if he or she has missed one meeting at which this matter before them has been discussed, they may issue a written certificate to the board of which they are a member attesting to the fact that they have either viewed the video or, or read the transcript or otherwise gotten themselves up to date on all of the proceedings that took place during their absence and present that to, to the committee or to the board. It becomes a part of the permanent public record of that transaction and it would then provide the ability for that member to once again vote along with, along with his counterparts on the committee. So it's, it's a very helpful measure. Many, many towns in Massachusetts and cities in Massachusetts have adopted this and that's what's before us in this proposed measure. This did appear before the Rules and Procedures Committee on October 8th and the committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend passage of this with amendments, and they were very minor amendments, but they're in our packet tonight. The First Amendment relates to the actual citation in our, in our charter where this section appears and it makes a correction. And the other amendment is in the body of the language which refers to, first of all, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23D. That was a recommendation made to us by, by our town attorney when this was actually introduced before the council. It did not have that statutory citation. So we've included that and the only other amendment is we referred to the groups that can take this type of action, the so-called multiple-member-appointed bodies, instead of the more cumbersome terminology of, you know, boards, commissions, and committees. And that's the language that actually appears in our charter. So that is what's before us and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Well, let's first, this is in a position actually to be referred to advertising. So can I get a motion and send this to advertising in a second for further discussion?
So moved.
In a second by Mr. McKinnon. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. So then, anyone have any questions? Ms. Ellenberg, you had a question?
I just had a one, a question about how the language is to miss one session of a public hearing. Now theoretically, let's say like the planning board or the zoning board or whatever would have multiple hearings over the course of the year. So is it one session per public hearing or one session for the year or what?
No, the, if, if the member missed one session of the matter, I'm saying this poorly, but with respect to the particular matter that's being voted on. So if I appeared before the conservation commission and I was petitioning for issuance of an order of, of conditions, that matter might be transacted over several meetings. And so that's what it would refer to if, if the member of the body missed any one of those, but not more than one, they could remedy that by virtue of the Mullen Rule.
So it can be used multiple times during the year, but I, but yes, I, I would support this. I think that it's a useful thing to get government working.
I would agree.
Any other questions from any councillors? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of referring this to advertising, please signify.
Before you refer, I just want to make sure, did, was the amendments that were proposed, were those voted yet?
No.
I don't, okay.
Okay.
I don't know if Mr. Chase had moved to amend. I know he talked about the amendments and it's included.
We're voting in committee only.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Are you, are you moving to do?
So I'll just say as amended, we can say.
Well, no, you have to make a motion to amend.
So make a motion for those amendments, Mr. Chase.
Second.
And a second by Mr. McKinnon. Okay. Any further discussion on the amendments as he described? Seeing none. So all those in favor of the amendments as, as proposed by Mr. Chase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on that. Now to the original motion of sending this to advertising.
So moved to send to advertisement.
Second.
This begins a second by Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion on sending it to advertising? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll send to advertising. Thank you, everyone. On that, so we will now go back to presentations, which our town clerk has so patiently been waiting, so thank you. So we have a town clerk update on the election process. I believe she has a presentation, so.
All right. So I was asked by our vice president of the council to do an update on the election. So this is about the state primary, which was back in September 3rd. So we mailed out 3,398 votes. Only 1,795 were returned, so only 52% of the ballots that we mailed out got returned. Then we are required by the state to have early voting, which occurred here, and we had 87 voters and several of them thought it was the presidential election. Their turnout for in-person on September 3rd was 1,127 voters, so the total number of voters for that primary was only 3,009 out of 18,813 voters. So that's only 16%. I calculated our costs. So we mailed out those ballots. It cost 97 cents a piece to mail those out. We have fees from LHS, which is our, they create the voting lists, the coding of the chips, the maintenance of the voting machines. So that was, so all the numbers are up there. We pay our poll workers through SAVE and that number is up there. Then the meals, Roach Brothers donated half, which is amazing. And then we had to have two police officers and then my staff overtime because it was a long day. And then the SAVE volunteers for early outing. Okay, so the poll workers are there and then the SAVE volunteers. So here is your grand total. Early voting hours are mandated by the state. It's an expensive hybrid system where we mail ballots, we have early in-person voting and then the actual election. So the total bill for the primary was $20,997 or $6.97 a vote. Set up for the polls was assisted by the high school volleyball team. Takedown was volunteers from the community. And at the end of the night, Merrily and Carlton Hunt helped with organizing the storage room, which if any of you know is like half a flight of stairs up at the middle school. And then they're organized so that setup for November should be easier. I was asked about improvements. So we would love to get a storage location for the polling booths and the voting boxes and tables and chairs and stanchions and signs on the same floor as the polls. We have rolling carts for the tables, but we cannot use them because they're up half a flight of stairs. The other thing that we would love as an improvement is faster voting equipment. I'm going to be going on Thursday to Lakeville. They have the second-generation voting machines. We have the first generation and I'll see if it's really that much better, faster, if it's worth asking for, you know, funding for that in the future. The other thing we did improvement was help from the town for setup. So when Ron Adams was clerk, he rallied the golf course and parks and rec and highway to set up and take down. And I like the idea of our And I like the idea of our town gathering together. Volleyball girls loved it because some of them are going to be able to vote in this election.
Oh, cool.
So we would love to get, we have plenty of, no problem getting volunteers for the actual voting, but they're not able to lift heavy machine and, you know, the voting machines and stuff. So I would be very appreciative if we could get more support from town departments. I already have the breakdown is some of the college students, but I can't get 8:00 a.m. Monday morning, college students to set up. So that would be my improvement. All right, so now getting ready for November 5th. Early voting is starting on Saturday right here from 11 to 5:00. The last day to register to vote is the 26th. If you are not registered, you can come in, register and vote, same day. Then we are open in-person during our regular town hall hours for those two weeks. And the last day to submit a vote by mail application is the 29th by 5:00 p.m. If anyone is interested in seeing our testing of the voting equipment, that is happening on Tuesday, the 22nd at 9:00. And then we're going to do something that we just started doing last election, which is early opening of the mailed ballots. We used to just send all the ballots to the polling location. We're opening them early, so they just have to feed them through the machine. And observers are welcome if they want to let us know. So we had a little snafu, which I shared with our town manager. We are going to have to do early tabulation or central tabulation or something like that because LHS printed our ballots wrong. The ones that we mailed out, 4,300, cannot be read by our current voting machines. They're going to be giving us a tabulator, a high-speed tabulator, which can read those ballots. So the ballots are good. We'll be able to count them, but we'll have to do it separately. Worst-case scenario, hand count. 4,300 were mailed out when we found out the ballots were misprinted. We're supposed to find out tomorrow about this high-speed tabulator. The issue with that is we were not planning to do that. So now we have to set up more overtime for my staff. We don't even know how to use this piece of equipment, so there's a lot of crunch time that's going to be happening with that. Apparently, we can do post-tabulation. Jolie's not excited about that. All right, so Sam still here? So Sam is the one who does our, our signs. We talk about, we talk about all the information that he might possibly want to put. So he got everything you need on these four signs. And I wanted to let you know that if you did get a ballot mailed, you do not need to mail it back. You can put it in one of the drop boxes. Did anyone know that there's a drop box on the front porch?
I saw it.
And then there's also one over on the, at the ramp. You can pay your bills there and stuff too. All right, so we're getting ready. We have 10 SAVE volunteers for the in-person up here voting for a total of 329 hours. Several are new to the clerk's office, and we welcome them. We are fortunate to have plenty of eager citizens offering to serve as poll workers. And there's an application online that citizens have been completing and dropping off at the town clerk's office. We are very lucky. We hear of other towns that have a real struggle to try to get people to work the polls. So on Election Day, we have scheduled 50 poll workers, 10 police officers, and again, Roach Brothers is donating towards the poll worker meals. We're fortunate that most of our poll workers are veterans of many elections, including presidential elections, and the new workers are always scheduled with experienced wardens and deputy wardens. And they received training last week on escalation reduction at the polls. And we also had the state provide poll training, poll worker training last October. We anticipate, remember the turnout for the primary? 15,000 for this one. The Board of Registars and I attended a Get Out the Vote event last week at BSU. Students were encouraged to check their registration status. We had a QR code. They love that stuff. So they could link to the state database, see if they were registered, where their precinct was. So then I discussed with them their voting plan, and if they were a Bridgewater voter, what was going on here. So the ballot question booklet was distributed, and the students had a view of the sample ballot, the Bridgewater one. So that should have been delivered to everyone's household here. Look familiar? So that's just the ballot questions. There are five ballot questions. The state mailed these out back in January. So every single registered voter got the opportunity to ask for a vote by mail. And this is what came to our office. If you didn't respond to that one, you got another one in September, for September. And then this is the final one. So there were three postcards that were mailed to anybody who is a registered voter, and there is no opt-out. So if you said in January, please don't mail any of these anymore, they don't care. They're still mailing them to you. And this is what we have to do. Those are nine precincts organized alphabetically by street. If anybody calls us and says, I know I signed up for this, we can go and get the postcard and pull it out and show them, no, no, you, you asked for a Republican ballot. All right. Massachusetts has automatic voter registration. So anytime you walk in the door, renew your license, or sign up for any kind of public assistance, or have any interactions with state agencies, they automatically register you to vote. Any of you guys have almost 18-year-olds? They can register, are they going to be, are they going to be 18 before the 5th? Oh, you don't.
He's rolling the clock back.
So if anybody, if anybody has a, knows someone who's going to be 18 on November 5th or before, they can vote today, even though they're not 18 yet. So that's kind of cool. Now, this is scary, the anticipated costs for this election. And I didn't even include in here the LHS costs, which is the voter, there's another 5,000. I just realized I didn't put that in here because we have to have them program our chips. We have to have them print out our ballots, not our ballots, our voter rolls and all that sort of thing. So between the 50 poll workers, the 10 police officers, the postage for mailing out all those ballots, the SAVE hours, the overtime for my staff and the meals, it's going to be probably 35 when you consider the LHS. So the final vote, the final vote count, we are required to potentially have an audit on the 8th of November. They're going to pick 3% of the precincts out of a hat, and then we will have to perform an audit on that particular precinct. We could get two precincts. So basically, we're going to have to do a recount of a couple of the precincts, potentially. And then the state requires that we submit final results by November 20th. So anybody who's like, why doesn't Pennsylvania know who won? Because they have the same kind of rules. The final results don't have to be submitted. And then we are back to business as usual with the annual town census. Everyone, please complete your census. I got 12 ballots back today that did not sign the envelope, or they put their ballot in the white envelope, if not in the brown envelope. And I couldn't, I had to try and figure out who they were and go to our census to get a phone number or an email so I could say, you didn't sign your ballot. Some of them are just going to, I don't know. And I want to thank my amazing staff. This is what makes it happen. Any questions?
Okay, any council questions? Ms. Robinson?
Thank you so much. Thank you to you and, and your, and your staff. I know this is a ton of work and all the volunteers that can involve with this. Thank you also for the cost breakdown. I think that's really helpful for us to understand what it takes. That last point you made about an additional 5,000 for the LHS issue. So is that related to the, they sent the wrong ballots?
No, I haven't even negotiated with them on that yet. They're going to.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Any overtime that I have to pay my staff, any, if we have to do the weekend before the ballot, before the 5th, if we have to work, I will make that pay.
Yeah. Do you, do you have any sense of? Do you have any, have any sense of how that happened?
It's a 2-millimeter bar at the bottom. It has nothing to do with anybody's names on the ballot. It is just a thing that our print, our, our voting machines won't read that particular ballot.
Okay. Odd. Good luck. Thank you.
Yeah, but the high-speed tabulator is really cool, and we're getting it for free.
Yeah. That's good. Thanks again.
Well, maybe.
I just wanted to thank you too. And there was another town that that happened as well.
Middleborough.
Okay. Lots of work, lots of preparation. Let's truly hope, I know it's a lot of work, but that turnout is what we need in all elections. It would be nice if it would happen in other elections. So thank you, you and the staff are crackerjack and you, we had the, a wonderful town clerk before, and it's just nice to see the spirit alive for elections.
Well, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chisholm. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Ms.
Yeah, thank you, Tina, for that. I think you answered all the questions that I asked, so thank you for preparing that and putting that together. I just had a quick question on the primary numbers that you shared. Do you have any comparison to what that was during the last primary in terms of numbers and voter turnout?
I don't know, but I can look through our records.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, you're very busy, so.
Four years ago primary?
Yes.
Can I get into after the 6th?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Just remind me.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we, Jolie in particular keeps amazing records. She can probably get that for you. But it's going to take, you know, various parts and pieces, but we'll get it for you.
No rush. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Just one final one for me. I'm sorry, my voice. A number of meetings back, we had a couple of citizens come up and make comment on some rule changes that were being made with the poll workers at the last election. Some were upset, concerned on snacks and meals and stuff like that.
Right, so at the beginning of the primary swearing-in, I suggested for their own security not to put political signs in their lawns or not to post on social media so that there can't be any, somebody coming back and saying, I saw that person had a Trump sign, and they're sitting there collecting ballots. I mean, I am not imposing it, I just suggested it.
And just at, at the day of the election, as far as getting food, snacks, and things of that nature, is there any?
Are you volunteering? That's what I'm hearing.
But I just, it was some concerns, some volunteers I had spoken with going forward.
Oh, so that was, they're going to be too busy to be eating at their poll locations. They're going to have to take forced breaks. My understanding is this could be a very busy election. So they'll just have to get up and go get something.
I just wanted to make sure, because again, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't lose any volunteers based on any potential changes that were being suggested, but.
So, so, sorry, can I ask, so what were the actual concerns? Were they not getting breaks? Were, were they?
No, they were allowed to take breaks. I just didn't want them to sit there and eat their muffin at the polling location.
Gotcha.
That was one of the, the people that we had that had complained about their mother who was volunteering type of thing. But thank you for answering those questions. Thank you so much.
Okay. We'll see you all at the polls.
See you at the polls. All right. Moving on to item I, Town Manager's Report. I'll turn it over to Ms. Robinson.
I'd like to start by turning the first item over to Mr. Rulie, who's taking point on the fire station project.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Rulie.
I believe the council secretary passed around our project manager's monthly project memo. I had anticipated giving you this update at a previous meeting, so we're in the middle of a month now, but it gives you a summary of the activities that have been happening out there. I will just add that under next steps, those first two activities are completed. There's a lot of good news in terms of the status of the fire station. When I took over the point on this in May, we were approximately three months behind schedule. I can tell you now that we've made up all of that lost time, and we're probably going to, if the weather continues to cooperate, we should be able to hopefully move ahead on the schedule a little bit. So as an example, we didn't believe we were going to start steel erection until January. Steel is being delivered next week. To that point, because of the chaotic nature of getting the initial work done, we did not have an official groundbreaking, but with the steel erection beginning in October, we're looking probably the week before Thanksgiving to have some kind of topping-off ceremony at the fire station. Some more information on that to follow, but certainly want to acknowledge past council members that were involved as well as the building committee. As the report says, we have a number of meetings. We have two standing meetings every week. Monday with the project manager, myself, and the architect. And we have larger team meetings on Wednesday. After that meeting, we meet as an owner with the project manager. Then once a month, we have what we call the core team, which brings in Mr. Rushton, as an example, who was on the building committee, participates. So there's been a lot of communication. Laurie Greeney, our finance director, and I are jointly monitoring and approving all the pay applications and change orders. We did have a significant change order right out of the bat because we went to bid before we had the project approved. Since that time, we've had minimal change orders. We're still right now at about 11% of the contingency budget's been hit for change orders, so we're monitoring that very closely. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, the weather will continue to.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Rulie. I just had a question. I know you just referenced the three-month timeframe that we were behind on. Has the date of substantial completion changed from what's on the contract originally?
It would have potentially had to change. I think right now we're back within the parameters of not having to have a change order to extend that date. That, that is my goal. I don't like change orders.
Do you know roughly what that date would be?
I think initially we were looking at September or October of 2025.
Thank you. Just had another few more, sorry. It also says on here, a civil engineer has been reviewing a plan for emergency signals on Pleasant Street. Do you know any updates there? Is that, are they looking at a beacon, a traffic light? What does that look like?
So in council, the original plan did not have any provisions for emergency signals. In consultation with both the police department and the fire department, given the location, it was determined that we definitely needed those signals. So the plan at present is there'll be a emergency signal as you come out of the station on Pleasant Street, and there'll also be two on Pleasant Street. One, just after the intersection, if you're coming to the east after that traffic light at Elm Street, and then coming from the east going west on the top of the hill before you start to come down. So we're working on, you know, how that is all going to be coordinated. We have a preliminary proposal from the electrical contractor for both the location and the extra electrical work that has to be done. So that will be a change order that we're going to have, but I think that we all were in agreement that it was important to have those emergency signals, not just have, don't block the box painted on, on the pavement.
Just to follow up to what you just mentioned with the change orders, you mentioned 11%. Could you clarify what you meant by that? Sorry.
We've, so the total amount of contingency that we have in the project budget for contingency unforeseen expenses, change orders, is 1,535,467. To date, we've spent 170 of that, so that's just about 11%.
That's not including the traffic light piece?
That does include the engineering and the electrical design for the traffic lights.
So I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Rulie, for, you know, standing firm on keeping change orders to a minimum. I was on the school building project, and we kind of did the same thing. I'm going to ask if, when we schedule the topping-off ceremony, that through the council clerk, maybe try to find out schedules? We had such a hard time doing that for the other committee because it was bigger. And if you get past councilors involved, that would be helpful. And then just one other thing, how active and involved is the fire station building committee on this project?
As I said, Mr. Rushton comes to the monthly core meetings. He and I talk a couple of times a month. So he's been involved, but I think manager Dutton didn't see the need to have them continually involved on the week, the weekly meetings that we're having.
So no, no involvement from the committee other than the chair?
Mr. Rushton.
But there are no meetings?
No, there's no separate meetings.
Okay, thank you.
The council's Mr. Halliburton?
Yes, thank you for your work, Mr. Rulie. I, I just see here on the report that it says something about the culvert. Can you just tell us what's doing with the culvert and why it's an item?
So this property has wetlands on it, and there is the need to cross over the wetlands to get from the street to the station, which required the installation of a culvert. So that plan. So, that plan was approved by the conservation commission. And just culvert need to be constructed first in order to get the heavy equipment into the site.
And may I ask, what was the cost of just the culvert itself?
I don't have that. I mean, I can get you that line item.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Robinson.
I can't imagine that the timing would work in this way, but I do have, I was curious. If we were to move forward with the specialized energy code, could that potentially impact this project?
Because the building permits already been issued for this project yesterday.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rulli.
Thank you.
All right, and moving on to update on revenue sources.
So, I've tried something a little different with this meeting, which is to give you a handout of everything I'm going to cover. And I'm not planning to go through it in that much detail. I just wanted, in case anyone wanted something to refer to later, some backup for you. But I'm going to touch on all the topics that are in the, in the, on the agenda. First one, so the question most specifically, most recently was about marijuana revenue. But there's had been some questions about other revenue sources in the past few meetings. So, I just wrapped them all in there on my own accord. In the area of medical marijuana revenue, the towns reached agreements with two vendors in, I think, 2018. At that time, the law allowed for the collection, not only a percentage of the sales, but also flat fees. And so, the town went ahead and inked those agreements and brought in just shy of $1,350,000 in about a five-year period. The law changed in 2022 and those, those agreements that towns like us had signed were no longer valid and switched to just being able to receive a flat percentage of the, of the gross revenue. I think Bridgewater chose, landed on 3%. And so, since that time, those agreements had to be redone, put back in place. And we have only received one payment for one vendor this year for $779 that came in, in early, in July. So, more will start to come in, but I think it's not nearly what the towns had received in the past. The other ones I just that I included, there had been questions about contributions from BSU. Just a total is almost $600,000 in the last 10 years that have come in from them. As we talked about, we distribute, that was one of our orders that you worked on tonight. Prison mitigation funds, $2,356,735 over a nine-year period. And then, I saw this spreadsheet on this when I first arrived late this summer about grants and how much the town started, Laurie started keeping track of all the grants that we have received. And I just thought it was, it was really awesome, for lack of a more technical term. $45.6 million since she started keeping track in 2022. And unfortunately, if you want to call it that, some of it was related to the pandemic. And, you know, we don't want to have one of those so we can benefit from it. But there's a lot of other good things on this list that the town, all of its various departments have received and gone after over the years. And there's some that don't even show up on here yet because this list was only through August. So, I just thought it was good information for everyone to have. The tire dump. So, the tire dump, been working on more information about that. Confirmed that the state did take the property over in 1995. And I had hopefully found my way to the right person at the Department of Environmental Protection. She's on the strike force team, which usually focuses on small dumps of tires by, say, a contractor somewhere that need to be cleaned up. And she, she now realizes this is a much bigger situation than a, you know, a truckload of tires. And so, I'm waiting to hear back from her about what the options might be for the state to work on, on removing those. I don't have answers yet, but I feel like I'm on the right track. So, another question had come up about how we handle possible zoning violations. So, what I wanted to talk about tonight is just help everyone understand what the general process is. Don't want to talk about any particular situation. So, what I did was outline the steps ran them by our zoning enforcement officer, the building official, Mr. Solari. And that's what's included in your packet. And very simply, if someone calls and says, hey, I think there's a, I think somebody's running business out of their house or they're parking too many cars or whatever the possible violation is, first step is to go out and, and take a look, investigate it, try to talk to the property owner and hopefully learn enough about it to make a determination. I actually include in your packet, the door hanger he puts out there if he can't reach somebody to say, hey, please call me about this. And he may reach out to the complaint as well to more truly understand, once he's been out there, what he saw or didn't see and understand why the complaint came forward as part of the investigation. And he may also then have to follow up, go out on more than one occasion if there's something to observe. If he does find that there's a violation, he's going to, he's writing a letter stating what the violation is and the process to cure it. Usually, people have 30 days. What he tells me is most times when people realize they haven't been doing something correctly, they correct it. That's generally the outcome and that's certainly what we hope for, that people willingly help resolve it. But if, if they disagree, there's a process by which they can appeal it to the board of bills. And that occasionally happens. And then, there's just some situations out there where there, we can't find that there's an actual violation, even though maybe the person who's complained doesn't agree. What I've found here and in other places that I've worked is that sometimes it's a neighbor-to-neighbor situation and those happen, you know, and we try to facilitate the resolution if we can, get people to talk to each other because sometimes it's not a municipal matter and not something we can do something about. And, and we hope to help people work those through and get, get on with their lives. So, that's the general process. The next topic was Vern Street paving. So, I think Ms. Ward provide everybody with two pages from the capital plan. This hopefully looks familiar. And in there, you'll find the details on Vern Street. It's listed in FY '27, so two years from now, for a total of $20 million, just over $20 million, which would cover water, work, drainage and roadway work, the roadways being the most expensive part of it. I think the difficult question, and I don't have an answer to it yet because I'm just starting to, the budget process with finance in the next couple of, of weeks, is how do we fund that? Certainly, the town has had to pass some important votes to fund schools and fund the fire station. So, where we are with the kind of money that you need to do a road project is something we're going to have to talk about. So, that's where I know it's on the list now. If it stays there, can move up, needs to move back. Haven't started to dig into that yet. Another question came up about Marathon Park. So, I learned that that is, was built, I think, by volunteers and donations and that sort of thing. And it's, it's, it's town-owned, but recreation is the department that it is assigned to. I spoke with them about that and understand that they typically mow it once a week. If they find trash there, they, they pick it up, but they actively don't keep a barrel there. They're encouraging people to take, you know, if you come with your, if your coffee cup, please take your coffee cup with when you go. And they also were planning to install woodchips last week. That was already on their list of things to do. I drove by it this morning. I didn't walk all the way around it, but it looked like it was shipshape from what I could see. And also wanted to point out to people that they have annual safety audits of this and the other playground that we have. And they, as a result of those, would be doing some minor repairs, improvements, like replacing swings and things, things like that. And occasionally, they get feedback from people about maintenance issues and they try to address them as, as quickly as they can. But trash, I guess, has come up at, you know, parks and other places. Our park steward, Mr. Hart, let me know that maybe in the past, there've been issues at Styles and Hart, the other park that I think has been in question. He says he's been out recently and hasn't really seen that be an issue. And hopefully, it stays that way. And then, lastly, town hall signage, that there was a very valid point of a person who came to speak a couple of meetings ago about why doesn't the sign here say town hall? And I can appreciate that because the first time I came, I'm like, hey, it looks like the Google picture, but there's no town hall sign. So, am I, am I really in the right place? And so, I think it's very valid. What I've learned from staff is that there's been a concerted effort to try and come up with a consistent signage, a look of signage that would be for all buildings and just haven't landed on exactly what that is yet. But it was definitely on the list of things to do to work out signage. Because you all understand why it's called the Academy Building, but someone who's just come here for the first time doesn't. So, happy to take any questions, but hopefully, the information in back is helpful as well.
Ms. Murphy, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Robinson. I just had a question on the Marathon Park update. Is there any reason why we wouldn't provide trash receptacles at those locations?
I can't answer that honestly. So, last year, I had a company who was trying to donate two bins to go over to Marathon Park. And I talked to Park and Recs and they said, the problem is when you do that at our parks in town that don't have cameras, people go there with their household trash and fill the dumpsters up and leave their trash there and no one can, can point a finger at anyone. I mean, we have no cameras at these parks or anything, so people can just go there and litter their own trash. I mean, I'd like to see them there too, but I do get the concern, you know? Especially when it's a company donating and then you have Bob and Jim down the road bringing two weeks' worth of trash from their dump, from, you get what I'm saying? That was what I got when I was trying to get two baskets down there at Marathon Park.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly reasonable. I actually, that was my first thought that came to head. I also thought we had to have trash receptacles at other parks around that aren't covered in camera. But I don't know what's possible and what's not, but it seems to be a reappearing.
Unfortunately, it's a problem in any community where you, it's been everyone I've ever been in. And so, I, I think unless the town wants to step up to spending more money and more resources on trash pickup at parks, I mean, it's certainly, that's something that can be discussed. But I know that, you know, the staff we have is pretty light in terms of their number, hours that they're budgeted to work now and to keep up with, just keeping the parks where we want them to be. So, I think that's something we can talk about in the future, but that's part of the reason why as well.
Thanks.
Ms. Lindy.
Just want to thank you for the written report with all the information. It's very, very helpful to have that. And I also want to thank the town council clerk for the blown-up, enhanced version of financial stuff, hoping that I can get that for other things. Because even though I got good vision, it's like so much appreciated to see this. But this is great to see it all in writing and to have the information and to refer back to it. So, I just want to thank you for that. On the town hall sign, just a thought, temporary thing. We're not, we're looking at comprehensive signs. I noticed on the townhouse across the way, there's a small sign that says town hall. I'm wondering if maybe it could be just removed temporarily, put on the front just for now, until we come up with a comprehensive sign. It's just sitting there and there are people that have come up to me and said, is that town hall? And these aren't, these are more newcomers to town like you alluded to. So, just suggested.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Albert.
Thank you. Thank you for your fine report. It's very, very good, very comprehensive. I wanted to say on the building signs on town buildings, just to get citizens involved, could you do an online contest among Bridgewater people for the signs? Just, you know, get some free artist work from the citizens who would be into it?
Thanks for the idea.
The council's, Ms. Triggles.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, town manager, for the very detailed report. We had a great phone call and we went through the report since I had specific questions regarding an incident that I had in my district. And you were excellent from start to finish. So, I just encourage all of my fellow counselors. We have an amazing interim town manager in place. If you're having issues, you're getting emails, you're wanting to rectify things, Blythe is an amazing resource, so definitely lean on her. She has a lot of, lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of experience. So, I will tell you that. And she is very right when she says that a lot of this can just be remedied with loving thy neighbor. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Triggles. Any other councils? Any requests for the next meeting? Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. To you to the town manager. At the Auto Fest, I had a couple of residents ask me that there used to be a neighbor, neighbors meetup and it was hosted by the BSU. And they would host residents once the students went home. And they were wondering why that stopped. I don't know how long, he thought it was only like three years, but he wasn't sure. So, I said I would ask for him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any councils? I'm sorry, Ms. Triggles.
Thank you. In light of how detailed your report was, I think that the public will be enlightened to hear that when we ask for information, we get a plethora of visuals. So, I do think that this might answer itself. But anytime citizens come and share their concerns or ask questions that need to be deferred to you, could we just make sure that those are answered in a timely manner? I'm not sure what that type of time looks like, if it's within the next meeting, if some things are more time-sensitive than others. But just making sure that the residents feel like they're being heard when they take the time to come to the meetings and they feel like their questions get answered.
Thank you, Ms. Triggles. Ms. Robinson?
Just one request for another update coming up. A while ago, we had made a concerted effort to try and raise some visibility around the report it or the, what's it, like click it, report it, yeah. Which is basically the, the citizen's ability to be able to report various issues, whether it's about water or roads, et cetera.
Is that see, click, fix?
Yes. Got it. I was like, I knew there was some little catchy thing. So, I can't remember how long ago it was, but we did get a nice update and rapport. And it looked like there were some opportunities to maybe compress some, some timing in response by a couple of departments. So, it'd be nice to get an update.
Sure.
Ms. Albert.
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot my other comment, which was that for the parks, would it be possible to have a cadre of volunteers kind of patrolling the parks just to kind of keep it up for, you know, no litter? And also for safety measures so that if people are walking alone in the park or some such thing, just, you know, some eyes and ears? What do you think?
I'm never one to turn down a volunteer, but I think the, the concern is more how to manage that, the ex, you know, with the staffing that we have. I, I never want to say no, but I need, we need to give that some thought.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go on once, go on twice. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, for the report.
Bless you.
And God bless. Moving on to Jay, discussions. We do not have any this evening. Committee reports. Does any committee have any reports they'd like to make this evening?
Do you need your vice president to step in?
I'm getting close. We're getting close.
I just had a, a quick update for the committee report section. Just a reminder that the ad hoc committee for the new town manager will meet next week to interview our three companies that have submitted proposals. And so, that meeting has been posted already, but just a reminder that'll be taking place next week.
Next Monday.
Twenty-second.
Next Tuesday.
Anybody, any other committees have any reports? Seeing none, we're moving on. We already committed and finished.
That should probably be posted if you think a quorum of the council will be there.
I believe it is.
Okay, as both, not just the ad hoc. It should be posted as a online. Oh, you're so good. Thank you.
Keeping us out of trouble. All right, so we already, we already took care of legislation for action. We do not have any old business, so we move on to new business. And first up. First one, Order OFY 25-018, Acceptance of Grant Funds, Police Municipal Road Safety Grant. And that was introduced by the acting town manager, Ms. Robinson, would you care to elaborate on this?
Yes, this is an annual grant from the state for road safety that goes to police departments. Bridgewater's share is $40,000, and the chief tells me that it's to pay for mobilization of officers at various times during the year for, to monitor winter impaired driving, distracted driving, seat belt viol, enforcement, seat belt enforcement, speeding, those sorts of things. So no details of exactly when or where or whatever, but those are the sorts of things that they use the grant for.
Thank you very much. I'd like for a motion to send to Budget Finance Committee.
Second.
Seconds everywhere. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Want to read off the orders?
Please scroll, sorry.
The voice is fading fast.
So the next one is Order OFY 25-019, Acceptance of a Gift for the Town River Landing Pavilion. And this was introduced by the acting town manager.
So we are wanting to move this project forward to build the pavilion, but we needed the funds to get going, to have the design completed, and pour the foundation, the pad that the pavilion would go on. And so we reached out to McDonald Industries, who's been a great partner for the town, and they readily offered a check of $20,000 to get that off the ground. So the town engineer is spearheading this project moving forward in order to start that process. The actual pavilion will be, probably will be constructed using students from the regional VOTEC School and donations of the materials from places like Home Depot and places like that.
Thank you very much. Motion to send this to Budget Finance Committee. Any further discussion?
If I may, Mr. Just, I think we should express our gratitude to the McDonald family for their generosity in providing this gift to the town.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah. Mr. McKenna?
Just want to echo his comments. I mean, me and Al have done a lot down there, and it's good to see other people get involved, especially helping financially. And on that same subject, me and Mary do have something being drafted up to turn Town River Landing into Parkland.
Thank you for that information. And again, thank you to McDonald Industries as well, for sure. All right, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, so all those in favor of moving to Budget Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next one up is Order OFY 25-020, Acceptance of a Gift, Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities, also introduced by the acting town manager.
So earlier this year, town, previous town manager, Mr. Dutton, submitted a park grant application to the state for the Summer Street Park, the former mobile station, and as you can see from the letter in your packet, we were awarded the full, the largest amount that they, that they will award, which is $500,000 for this project. So this is to accept that grant and move it forward. Mr. Rulie is going to be taking point on this project in partnership with areas, folks in the area, this BSU, who's pledged a match apart to this project, to finalize the design, get going by finalizing the design, figuring out what the total cost is going to be, but we're hopeful that the, between the two, we'll be able to get this project done.
Sounds good. Motion to move this to Budget Finance Committee.
Still moves.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President?
Oh, yes.
Just on that, can we make sure that we coordinate also with the adjacent Little Park, the Bridgewater Improvement Association?
Absolutely, yep. He's already, he's already in touch with those folks whose name escapes me.
Melissa DeJardin, I think, the consultant, okay.
Exactly.
Yes.
Thank you.
DeJardin.
Yep.
All right, moving on, next one.
It's Proposed Ordinance DFY 25-008, Proposed Amendment to Part II Administrative Code, Chapter 1, Article 3, Section 1B, introduced by Dr. Perry.
Thank you, I have to speak some more. No, this guy, this goes toward changing the rules a little bit. As you know, when we formed the ad hoc committee, it was an appointment by our admin code by the town manager. I am proposing to change that to making that, any ad hoc committee that's formed for the town council by the town councilable to be appointed by the council president and not the town manager. All other ad hoc committees going forward, that's not related to the, to the town, to the town council, would still be made by the town manager, but anything referencing, you know, the, or as a part of the, the town council would be made by the council president. So again, this is to be referred to Rules and Procedures. Do I have a motion to send that to Rules and Procedures?
Motion refers.
Second. And second. Any discussion on it at this point? Seeing none, all those in favor sending to Rules and Procedures, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next one is Ordinance DFY 25-009, Veterans Volunteer Services Program, also introduced by Dr. Perry.
Thank you. So again, this is just an expansion of the Veteran Volunteer Program that's getting us up to speed on the update on the Mass General laws regarding it. But again, it allows our volunteers to save money on their tax bills, and then it also affects veterans as well. That's really the update in this. And again, I will look to see this move to Rules and Procedures, please, for review.
Moved.
And second by Ms. Jingles. Any questions or comments on it? Ms. Robinson?
I'm just curious, does this exist in other cities and towns and?
Yeah, I believe, well, again, it's, it's based on Mass General laws, so I think it just is getting
Oh, okay, sorry.
us as a town up to speed.
Ah, yeah.
But thank you for the question.
Thank you.
All those in favor of sending to Rules and Procedures, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
All right, finally, Proposed Ordinance DFY 25-010, Proposed Amendment to Chapter 157, Article 2, Section 1, introduced by Ms. McGrath and Council Lindy.
Ms. McGrath, would you like to introduce?
Yeah, this is so that we're following the federal law that towns and cities usually don't follow, that the, as long as the United States flag is flown, the POW flag is flown underneath it. So it's to mend that.
Mr. Lindy, anything additional?
No, I'm in concurrence.
Okay. So again, this is being sent to Rules and Procedures. Do I have a motion to send to Rules and Procedures?
Still moves. Second.
I got all over the place. Any other questions or comments at this point?
I just have one question, because I kind of got confused with that resolution that we were talking about. So all we really did was just strike out that it would be out front of here. It can be anywhere, can be memorial building, can be 9/11, can be the high school, can be that.
Yes.
All right. I was, I just got confused with that, and I was waiting until we got here to bring that up.
Yeah, but that's a resolution just based on the will of the council.
I get a resolution, this is the more important thing over the resolution. I get that.
There's a certainly be more of that.
Trying to make sure I was on the same page, because I wasn't at the beginning, to be honest. When I voted, I wasn't completely sure what it was, so.
Not a problem. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, all those in favor sending to Rules and Procedures, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. That takes care of new business, thank goodness. We will now move to citizens' comments, for those that have stuck around the entire meeting. Again, if you'd like to come up and speak, please state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if my vice president would so, read that update at the top one more time.
Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Dr. Hunt, please go ahead.
Will Ms. Robinson's town manager report be included in the minutes? If not, why not? Two, many years ago, I was, when I chaired the Master Plan Committee, we had a grant, I think I wrote it, for $15,000 to do a branding exercise in town. It failed pretty miserably, but maybe we can get another grant to help us with the branding for the signage. I will also state that any signs that go in the historic district must get a certificate of approval, I think it is, from the Historic District Commission. So you can't put a sign on any facade, in any yard, anywhere in the town, central business, central historic district without that committee approving it. As for the Town Hall, Town House, we could just cover the Town Hall sign. I don't think we should be destroying it, because that's historic, or we could change it over time to the Town House. But I agree that having signage out here in front, that, we actually had talked years ago about have a scrolling sign that actually announced town business, when your meetings were, when a committee meetings were, somewhere out on the academy. Again, that would have to be approved by the Historic District Commission. And not to throw anybody under the bus, but I'm a member of BIA, I'm married to the president of BIA. We haven't heard from Mr. Rulie about talking about the two parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Anybody else like to come up, please? Please, come right up again. Name and address for the record again, please.
Dave Sidon, 70 Deerfield Drive, Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Back again. I took notes. One of my notes was something I forgot to tell you guys when I spoke the first time, and then I started taking notes when the other people were speaking. Unfortunately, my electric phone died, so.
[laughing]
Next one, I'm going gas, I swear to God. And I'm sorry if I look real awkward going back and forth trying to get this microphone, I'm trying to get that oral index, because I got these government pyrenates that are electric too, and they don't work with a darn, okay? So let's get back to the flag. That was a thing I forgot to talk about. All right, I'm a Marine vet and a Ranger, and the flag, it, it, it doesn't represent vets. I want to start it up by saying that, I forgot to address that. It doesn't, this isn't a veteran thing, so it's not like, you don't own, my father was a veteran, and my son was a veteran, no, that's baloney, right? That, that flag, the POW MIA flag, is not about veterans. That flag there, that's not a banner. It's, it's, it is our national flag that represents every single one of us, no matter what your color is, or no matter what your ethnicity, or lifestyle you choose, or anything, it represents everybody. People who own cats even, you know? So it, it, it's not something that is, it's like a community thing. The reason why you see a lot of veterans like me get real kind of vociferous about this is because the POWs and the people who are missing among the 80,000-plus that never came back, they were from our ranks. Those men and women, men and women. Some of them might have been trans, some of them might have been, you know, some kind of weird religion, you know? Whatever they, they ascribed to, they were still Americans that fought for that flag. I was told a story once about a former slave that was, I think, it was, he was a former slave, that was with the Union Army somehow in one of the last battles of the War Between the States. Not the Civil War, there's no Civil War, it was a war between states. And he rushed forward into gunfire to grab that flag, because that flag represented him. It represented him, no matter what the color of his skin was. It represented all the brethren that were in his unit that were fighting for his cause. That flag represents every single one of us, every single one. And the POW MIA flag, it deserves to be up there along with that because of the fact that those people fought for what represents us, no matter what community they came from. And there was something else, of course, I forgot, because of my electric phone, but I, I put some notes on my hand. So what's the next thing I want to talk about? Oh, we're talking about something that a young lady brought up about the voting thing. The thing that struck me was, how do you authenticate that with the mail-in votes? You don't need an answer now, but that's just something that, you know, I want to address to everybody that's still here. How do you authenticate what's real that you get in the mail? I can't like order a gun through the mail, or order, you know, go into a liquor store, what do they do? They check my ID. Get on a plane. Oh, God forbid, you don't have your ID trying to get on a plane. You know what I'm saying? They authenticate you in every single walk of life, except this one. This is the one that's going to choose whether one candidate or another is going to either take more of my money and control more of my life, or give me something that the government's going to give me, something like that. How do you authenticate what comes in the mail? How do you know what's real? How do you, how do you know? I got five seconds? Oh, no, okay. What's the next thing? Overtime pay. You got, you got people that are getting overtime pay that almost approaches contractor pay, military contractor pay, you know? Maybe ask some of them to volunteer along with the volunteers. That'll save thousands of dollars, guaranteed. You know what I'm saying? Let's see, sign volunteers, someone brought it up? Ask them if they volunteer? Ask the vol, ask the people that get all that overtime, hey, would you mind volunteering since we're paying you, you know, almost, what, Blackwater mix? Yeah, that's something to think about. Save some money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sidon, appreciate it. Anybody else like to come up and speak, please? Go on once, go on twice. Thank you for those that came up to speak, once again, we appreciate it. We'll move over to council comments, and I'll start with my left one, Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jingles.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate that the flags that we fly in June represent a lot more than just someone's lifestyle choice or a specific group. It represents a lot of hope, possibility, and equality in our country, and I do think that because Bridgewater has been a beacon of that hope, we want to ensure that we continue that, whether or not we're flying it at this flagpole, another flagpole, we will be prioritizing it because it matters to the people of this town, just like the POW flag matters. So I just really want to reiterate that it's not a matter of a lifestyle choice, it is simply who our residents are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jingles. Mr. Jakes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone for your attendance and participation this evening. I think we actually had a very productive meeting, and I think it was a very, very cordial meeting. I do think that with respect to the flag issue, which we'll continue to discuss, having sent the proposed ordinance amendment to, to a committee, the concept of utilizing more than one flagpole, I think makes perfect sense, and I think it's something we should, is deserving of further discussion and consideration by the council. It may well be the kind of compromise that this situation calls for. So that's something I think that if we can, at the moment at least, keep in the back of our minds, but I think it's, it'll be fruitful to discuss that possibility further in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Ms. Lindy?
I'd like I'd like to strongly agree with both of my fellow counselors that spoke before me. And just a suggestion, I did suggest to Mr. Dutton over a year ago that maybe we consider having a second flagpole at the Academy Building. I don't know what the cost of that is, but that could solve the problem completely in the future, and then we don't have to play the flag shuffle. So I don't know what the cost of that is, but I'd like to have that looked into. That's all I have, and thank you everybody for participating and being here and being active citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, I'd just like to say quickly, again, echoing the statements of my fellow counselors, I think, I want to thank folks for coming out and speaking tonight from the Veterans Group and from BCCR. And I just want to say, I think we should all keep in mind that I don't think this issue has to be one versus another, and I think we need to find a way where, you know, all parties can, can feel recognized and appreciated. And so, I know I will consider that when we, when it comes time to voting and, and figure this out. But I just wanted to echo that and make sure folks are aware of that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Halliburton.
I want to thank everyone who has come out tonight. Thank you for being active citizens in our town. Thank you to town manager Robinson. I like your report very much. It was very detailed, very good. And lastly, I was going to say, Mr. Lindy had a good idea about an extra flagpole, which could solve everyone's problem, because of course, we want to respect everyone. Of course we do. And I suppose the reason why I said the third flag was, the first flag, the American flag, is everybody. And then the POW MIA are a sliver of everyone who has served. And they make the rights for everyone to have all those other flags. And so that's why I propose that, so. So, I think we should respect everyone in town. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Halliburton. Ms. Robinson.
I, I really appreciate the comments from, from my fellow counselors, and especially from the perspectives of our citizens, you know, with varying different angles and suggestions in terms of how we address flags. I think this becomes such a hotly debated topic in so many ways because of people's different lived experiences, of what they experience America to be, what they experience their own identities to be, and, and other ways that we serve within our country. So, it's really interesting to see this live and at work and, in a very real environment for us. But at the heart and core of it, everyone wants to be seen and heard regardless. And so I hope, and actually, I feel very confident that we're going to get to a good compromise that really does allow, as, you know, as Council Murphy said, I don't think one has to supersede or, you know, do one in place of the other. There's room for all of it. So, thank you for the dialogue. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. McKinnon.
Just two quick things. I want to send my condolences out to the Portuguese community in town. Somehow, I'm not related to them. I'm probably the only person in the Portuguese, that's Portuguese in town that isn't related to everyone, but they lost a kid my age, 30 years old, Joe Reese. What was that, Sunday morning? And he was just a part, like I said, he's part of that big family, the Portuguese community in this town really is one big group. And second, I just want to talk on the flags. It's not about what flag's better or who's what, first, second, or third place. It's just about trying to make things right for everyone. I mean, the veterans, thankfully, we have Greg now, but we didn't have Greg for a while. And before that, there wasn't much help from what I've heard. I'm not speaking for veterans when I say that, but I've heard stories of things. And I mean, the fact that there wasn't even a POW flag anywhere around town is pretty sad, because as this guy has said, 81,000 have gone and not came back. I mean, some veterans will agree with me on this, some will disagree with me with this. 130,000 that have committed suicide since 2001, like, like that's flag up. I mean, you got people that come home. We just had a veteran, 40 years old, die from brain cancer. He was a Marine. I bet he was near Camp Lejeune or the burn pits out there. I see that kind of as a missing in action prison of war type situation to myself. And I just, I want to see everyone get along. I want to see the flags up. And I do think the best idea might be a second flagpole in front of the Academy Building to myself. Because I mean, just, I've had this conversation with a few people, just October alone, you could have one for breast cancer awareness. There's, I think there's three or four different Jewish holidays in the month of October. I mean, you got November, there's plenty of other stuff. You could do Injijs People Flag, Columbus Flag, whatever is, makes people happy. I just think there should be more than one in front of the main building, for sure. Because like I said, it's not about first, second, or third. It's just everyone being involved and included and not thrown to the side or all this. It was never, this whole flag thing isn't trying to get rid of any flag raising ceremonies, it's just trying to make things right for the veterans community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. I will close by not saying too much, because I don't have much of a voice left. But I do want to recognize, the Senior Center had a nice event today, Health Safety Expo for the seniors. I had a chance to participate in, and I know a counselor or two were there as well. So I just want to give a shout out to all those that put that on. It was well attended, many seniors came, demonstrations, police and fire, and a lot of other organizations that help our seniors in town. So it was a great event. They usually try and do one every two years. And, yeah, I was just happy to be a part of it and glad that it was put on. And again, everything was said tonight by just about every council regarding flags. Our ultimate goal as, as a council is to come up with a solution that's going to make everyone as happy as possible. I've had conversations with our veterans agent, chief of police, working on the fire, chief next, but just trying to find some possible solutions and answers that we can bring forth and hopefully make sense for everybody. So, that's our goal and our, our, what we want to try and do as a council, to help out, to make everyone happy about the situation. But that's all I'm going to say, because I can't talk anymore.
Mr. President.
Do I have a motion to?
Still moves.
Motion to adjourn in a second to my left. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are in adjournment.